Hello, everyone. I'm Randy Arrington and welcome to a special episode of Page Valley Livin' as we take a three-week hiatus from our usual musings to focus on the world of local politics. On the ballot this fall in Page County are three contested races: the District 5 School Board seat, the District 1 seat on the Page County Board of Supervisors, and the chairman's seat also on the Board of Supervisors. Over the next three weeks, we'll be putting candidates in three contested races side by side to share their views on local issues, and we hope you'll join us for all three of these candidate forums. We'll be recording all three forums at the Stanley Fire Hall where we sit in tonight, and we want to take this opportunity to thank all of the volunteers at the Stanley Fire Department for allowing us to use this facility. We kick off these candidate forums with the race for the District 5 seat on the Page County School Board. And with us tonight are the two candidates, Anna Marie Mendez and Charlie Queen Jr. We are filming tonight's forum on Monday, September the 8th, and we will be airing this forum on our YouTube channel and our website on Wednesday, September the 10th. Now, we will be asking questions of the candidates in two separate segments, the first being basic questions; some will be repeats of the Q&amp;As that Page Valley News published back in August under the Shenandoah News category for these two candidates, while the second segment is going to get into a little bit more detail. Now, one disclaimer that we would like to offer for tonight's viewing audience is the fact that the moderator's wife is a teacher in the Page County Public School System. We do want to give that disclaimer and open transparency to those viewing. So sit back and enjoy this first of three candidate debates, or forums rather, and we'll get underway right here with the School Board District 5 race in just a moment after a word from our sponsor. Whispering Pines Assisted Living is now accepting new admissions. Quality care at affordable rates, professionally trained staff, memory support, and short-term respite stays are all offered by Whispering Pines Assisted Living, powered by Valley Care Management, where home and heart meet. Call for a tour today on Leeksville Road in Luray or learn more at valleycaremanagement.com. And welcome back, everyone, to the first of three candidate forums here. This one focusing on the race for the District 5 seat on the Page County School Board. With us, as we mentioned earlier, are the candidates, Anna Marie Mendez and Charlie Queen Jr., and we want to thank both of you for being here tonight and participating in this process to inform the voters. Now, each candidate, the format of this forum, each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Rebutts are allowed and up to one minute each, and we want to note that the candidates have not been given the questions in advance. So here we go. As stated earlier, it's our first segment, it's going to start off with some basic questions. So we're going to allow each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves and state why they are running for public office, and we're going to start with Ms. Mendez.
Well, good evening, everyone. I first want to give thanks to Page Valley News, the candidate forum, because it allows us the opportunity to come into your home. I am a former schoolteacher, and I really believe that the children in this county and not even the United States and perhaps even the world, that they are the future leaders of this country, and I believe that they need a voice, they need to have the opportunity to get educated and before the world stage actually have a good life, good money and whatnot, and that, of course, makes it a big difference when we take care of their educational needs as well as the parents and as well as the faculty and the teachers. They need people that will stand up for them and fight for them, and I'm here to do just that.
Mr. Queen, you have two minutes.
Well, again, thank you so much, Randy, for having us tonight in this forum. Yes, my wife taught public school five years in Luray, 14 years at Page, and has been a substitute teacher since 2014 and continues to do that today. I never thought I would go into education, but I'm actually teaching French to seven of our kids in our church. They're all homeschool kids, and so we've almost completed the first year of French, so I'm very proud of their success. Yeah, the reason I'm running, I would like to see, first of all, that the money that is given to the school system is used wisely, that schools are taken care of, kids are respected, disciplined, if that's an issue, that it's being properly handled. I think we have a great teacher corps, a good administrative corps. Not sure about the busing situation as far as the manning for that, but that may be an issue. Also, I think one of the issues coming up will be the infrastructure in our three elementary schools: Stanley Elementary, Shenandoah Elementary, and Springfield. Being an older facility, they're going to need more attention certainly, so that would be something I think the School Board will have to work through. Thank you.
Very well. All right, well, we'll move on to our second question here, and we're going to start with Mr. Queen on this one. We'll go back and forth between the candidates. So in our second question, we'll ask each candidate to talk about their qualifications for the office and why they feel they are the best candidate for the District 5 seat.
Well, for the last 25 years, I've sat on our Finance Committee at our church. We've grown from approximately $80,000 to over $400,000 today, so it's gotten certainly more complicated. On my professional career, I worked 20 years at Merck, I worked five years at General Electric over in Charlottesville. I've done extensive planning, inventory control, worked heavily with numbers, and so I think that's one thing that sets me apart, is that I'll be able to be an asset in the budgeting process and also just monitoring how things are going throughout the year.
All right, Ms. Mendez, you have two minutes.
Hi. One of the privileges that I have is that I was a product of the DOD school system, which I really was fascinated with, with how much money the government will actually spend on good quality teaching, good quality teachers, and give us an opportunity to grow. And one of the things that I've seen as far as the United States is concerned is that there's 15 agencies that take care of the budget, and school is number 15. That's all the way down at the bottom, and it's like we're having a race to the bottom because if we're going to talk about taking away budgets from schools and whatnot, right now the budget is like 4% out of $268 billion, and sometimes historically it's 2%. I've been able to work within the system of the United States Navy, also deal with budgets, and I believe that, given the opportunity, I'm going to definitely fight for that because I think that the only way that we're going to have a creative student body that can go before a world stage and be a good product, as we are in the United States. And our children are just as smart as the other children that sometimes want to be brought down here for the H1B. We need to get them. Why don't we give our children those jobs? Why don't we give our children that schooling? And I'm going to fight for that.
Well, it certainly seems like both of you had some experience with working with numbers and budgets. Let's move on to our third question here, again, kind of in our first segment with a lot of just basic things to get at the basic views of these candidates. What do you think is a strength of the Page County Public Schools, and how would you maintain or improve that strength? And we're going to start with Ms. Mendez.
Actually, I don't know if folks are aware that when they do the school assessment test, Page County is right up there. In fact, we're even above the neighboring school systems from here. I won't mention who they are, but that's something that I believe that we should be proud of, the fact that our children are competing, not only competing but outdoing them, and I think that's a strength that we have in Page County. Of course, we have to give thanks to our teachers, that we can retain good teachers that will teach our children correctly, but it shows in an assessment test that they are doing really well.
Mr. Queen, you have two minutes.
I'm sorry, the question again.
The question is, what do you think is a strength of the Page County Public Schools, and how would you maintain or improve that strength?
Yeah, I think, again, the teacher corps is certainly one of the big strengths of the system. Getting support from administration, getting support from parents, I think, is extremely important. Having the respect of the students and, in turn, giving the students respect, I think, is very important. I think having a new superintendent, I've only heard good things about him, so I would have to say that's another strength of the school system, and if I'm elected, I look forward to working with the School Board and with him as well. Thank you.
Very well. And for our last question for this first segment, we're basically going to flip-flop the question. We're going to say, what is the biggest weakness or perhaps challenge of the local school division, and how would you improve it? We will start with Mr. Queen.
Again, as I reiterated before, I think one of the biggest challenges is, what are we going to do with the three elementary schools as far as, do we just renovate? Do we build a new school? I think that's going to be really a tough decision that the Board's going to have to make. At some point, when it costs more to renovate and maintain than it costs to build, then I think that's time to take a look at whether we need to be building a new school or not. Obviously, the price tag is going to be big, but it's something that we'll have to take a look at.
Absolutely. Ms. Mendez?
Well, I also agree with Charlie here that if elected, I am here willing to help out and work with Dr. Huber. One of the situations we have as far as weaknesses are concerned, I think that we fail to think about our students and how awesome they're doing. Recently, they had celebrations for the students where they had Excel, and I just believe that we need to always give a pat on the back to our children when they're doing really well. As far as budgets are concerned, sometimes we do need to have new infrastructure, we do need to have, like, I talked to the principal in Shenandoah Elementary, and they have new enrollments, more children coming in, no room to put them in classrooms, there's no space to create modulars. So, yeah, we have an issue where we're going to have to come up with something. I think I was told that perhaps the elementary in Shenandoah is probably the sixth elementary as old as it is, so I think that's kind of nice, but at the same time, we have to consider how we're going to improve in those assets. What do we need to do to fight for that budget to work when we have budget constraints? But it needs to happen.
Very good, very good. Well, so far, so good in our candidate forum here tonight in this District 5 School Board race. That's the end of our first segment and the basic questions. We'll get into more detailed questions in our second segment right after another word from our sponsor. Hawksville Assisted Living in Luray is now accepting new admissions. Hawksville Assisted Living, powered by Valley Care Management, offers quality care at affordable rates, professionally trained staff, and veterans' aid and attendance. Come visit Hawksville Assisted Living, located near the beautiful Hawksville Greenway in Luray. Call for a tour today or learn more at valleycaremanagement.com. Welcome back, everyone, to our second segment here in the District 5 School Board race, where we're going to get into some more detailed questions. But first, I do want to add to my earlier disclaimer. We had mentioned at the beginning of the broadcast here that the moderator's wife is an employee, a teacher in the Page County Public School System, but I should also mention that my daughter, who is also our camera operator and tech person, is also a student in the local school division. So we want to be upfront and transparent about that. Okay, our first question now of the second segment. There have been some complaints within the school system that the division is too top-heavy with high-paid administration in the central office while a number of teaching positions remain unfilled. Where do you stand on that issue? We start with Ms. Mendez.
I believe we have 30 new teachers that have started this year, and I've also heard that same remarks where maybe everything was too top-heavy, and the people that are in the trenches actually doing the work felt like perhaps they're not being valued. And that, to me, is important because we need all these very good teachers to keep and retain them, because that's the reason I said that we are exceeding in this area as far as Page County compared to other counties, and having that retention is important. But there's also the budget constraints. Sometimes we know that certain positions, if you're required to have a doctor's degree or whatnot, sometimes in order to keep these people also employed with us, we want them to have a decent salary. I think the average salary for a teacher, it's said that it's about $60,000 a year. I'm wondering whether or not we have more like a $40,000 a year job. And, of course, it's important because, like I said, the fact that we need to retain these teachers, and we need to perhaps keep in mind that they need to be valued, not just as teachers, but they take care of their families, and they would like to see some of that come into their homes.
And because these are more detailed questions, I'm going to repeat the question each time. There have been some complaints within the school system that the division is too top-heavy with high-paid administration in the central office while a number of teaching positions remain unfilled. Where do you stand on that issue?
Well, since my wife is a substitute teacher, she brings home a lot of the issues that go on in the schools, and I think it would be beneficial for the administration to rotate through and do some of the substitute teaching jobs so they can get a firsthand experience on what it's like to be in the classroom. It's kind of like, when I worked at Merck, flying at 30,000 feet, everything looks nice and green till you start to land the plane and you see all the weeds. And so I think that's a lot of times what happens, is that people, they get in the high-paid position, playing with numbers, and forget that their real product is the students, and I think that's one thing that would go a long way to helping them understand the issues that are going on in the school, is to participate from a time-to-time basis. As a substitute teacher, I think it would be a good thing for the county.
Very well, very well. We're going now to our second question. Teacher retention has long been an issue in Page County as many leave for higher-paying jobs elsewhere. While Page County may never be able to pay Northern Virginia wages or even that of some neighboring localities, what other incentives could the school system offer to increase retention? We'll start with Mr. Queen.
That's a good question. In Northern Virginia, they do have a high, certainly a high rate of pay, but they also have a high rate of incidences in the schools. I understand from some of the neighboring counties is that some people say that I wouldn't substitute in those schools for all the tea and china. So I think that, I guess, as far as retention of the teachers, I think just what really helps a lot is the teachers that know that they are appreciated, that, you know, it doesn't hurt them to be recognized in some form. And again, if there are discipline problems, that they're handled correctly, efficiently, quickly, and not just put it all back on the teacher. So I think that would really help a lot as far as decreasing the rate of teachers leaving the county.
Right. As I said, I'll repeat each question because these are a little more detailed. Teacher retention has long been an issue in Page County as many leave for higher-paying jobs elsewhere, and while Page County may never be able to pay Northern Virginia wages or even that of neighboring localities, what other incentives could the school system offer to increase retention?
I understand the issue of teacher retention. I myself started with Title I grants, which basically pays for teachers' salaries. However, I got to a point when I moved to the United States where, all of a sudden, I had to work as a substitute, and I realized that if you get called in one day a week to work in a school, that does not pay your rent, that does not pay your mortgage. And we also have to keep in mind that, as I said before, we're number 15 at the bottom of the budget, and that's run at a 4%, but usually at a 2% right now out of those $268 billion that the United States is going to give to the School Board as long as they decide not to stop defunding the school. Number one, how can you lose a good teacher when they know that their salaries are a stick where their job might be defunded, and naturally, they have to worry about these Only 4% of the budget is actually held for teachers, and we do need to retain those teachers, and they need to be valued, and they need to have a way to feel like they have something for upward mobility. That means that people are going to have to fight for that budget. They're going to need people that definitely don't want to be in the sight of, let's defund because that's the way to do it. That's not going to happen here.
And Ms. Mendez, I don't want to comment on anyone's answers here tonight because I want the viewers to judge that, but just for clarification's sake, the budget numbers you were speaking about were federal, not state or local, but federal.
Right now, in the budget of Page County, we have grants that are coming through Title I that kind of adds up to almost $2 million, and if you think that that's how we're going to take care of our teachers and still take care of our students, take care of everything, that is going to be very difficult.
I didn't want to give you too much extra time, but I just wanted to clarify that to make sure that we were what we were talking about there. Okay, let's go on to question number three here. This is kind of a specialty question, that it's a place that's kind of special in the hearts of a lot of folks in the county. Our tech center and many of the programs they have, because we're talking about a day and age where not everybody goes to college, and we're going to address that in our next question, but there's a lot of high-paying jobs out there in some of these fields. So our tech center has grown in popularity and offerings over the years. What can be done to continue that trend, and are there any trades or professions that you would like to see added? And we're going to start with Ms. Mendez.
Well, that's near and dear to my heart because in my family structure, I had a daughter who became an academic, and right now she's working on a master's in accounting. However, my son chose to go the vocational tech way. He's a mechanic, and he earns good money, he takes care of his family, and so we're giving the opportunity to have those venues for our teachers. In fact, we have a young man here in our county that just came in, number one, as an electrician. Hire yourself an electrician, hire yourself a plumber, hire yourself a mechanic. Believe me, those are good jobs, and sometimes it's sad to know that they'll get trained, but perhaps they may have to move to another place because they have their families to take care of. Definitely, we want to offer things that are convenient for the students to learn. I'd like to see some type of aviation, something that, working with anything that they can build themselves. I'd like to see that happening here, too.
And there's some shops out at the Luray Airport that might be willing, I think they take on some interns. That would be interesting. Just to repeat the question, our tech center has grown in popularity and offerings over the years. What can be done to continue that trend, and are there any trades or professions you'd like to see added?
Well, thank you, Anna, for that plug for aviation mechanic. My son happens to have his business at the airport, Elephant Avionics, where he installs avionics in airplanes. He took on a mechanic who was a, worked for, I believe it was Highway Motors, and has taken him on and trained him, and the guy is just thrilled to death to be there, and my son is thrilled to death to have him there. So that's a good one, is aviation. The ones that they have there now, as far as building trades, electricity, the LPN program, or, you know, the nursing program, the beautician program, they're all great avenues for kids who are college material. Not everybody is college material, and quite honestly, a lot of kids that go to college, they come out of college and say, huh, what am I going to do now? So I think that that's a great avenue for the kids that have identified that that's what they want to do, a trade, and many of them come out of school with zero debt and making good money, and I would definitely like to see that continued.
Very good, all right. Our last question before we get to our closing statements for tonight, and this is kind of a, maybe sort of a two-parter, but it flows along the same train of thought, so I'm going to try to say it very slow for you here. According to the Virginia State Council of Higher Education, about 65% of recent high school graduates statewide enrolled in college, and that was a decline of five years ago when it was at 72%. Now, in Page County, that number, at least for four-year colleges and universities in the most recent graduating class, was around 15 to 18%, and actually, not much different in recent years from those numbers. If you add in two-year colleges, that number, I think, goes up to somewhere around 40, 43%, but still well below the state average. So this is kind of a two-parter. What can be done to increase the number of students furthering their education, and what can be done to raise the overall value placed on education in the community? And we're going to start this one with Mr. Queen.
Well, I think one thing is to encourage the kids to become an expert in something, whatever field they want to study, that they become an expert in it, that they read extensively. This is getting off a little, a tangent, but as far as the kids having smartphones, I think that's been a detriment to the kids. A lot of them don't have a good foundation as far as mathematics and English, and they're depending on their smartphone to do their thinking for them. So as far as to increase that number, I think to just increase the emphasis on the academic classes, but again, if the student elects not to go that route, I don't think any student should be pushed to that route. So I think that's...
Okay. Now, as I said, I will repeat the question here. According to the Virginia State Council of Higher Education, around 65% of recent high school graduates statewide enrolled in college, and that was a decline of five years ago when it stood at 72%. In Page County, that number stood at around 15 to 18%. I think the actual numbers were, Luray High School this past class had about 100 graduates, and 15 went to college, and I think there were 19... And I think there were 19 at Page County High School that went to, or I may have those flip-flopped, that went to four-year colleges and universities. And again, if you include two-year colleges, it maybe comes up around 40%, 43%. But what can be done to increase the number of students furthering their education after high school? And what can be done to raise the over, and I think this is the important one, what can be done to raise the overall value placed on education in our community?
Well, first of all, let's begin with, stop threatening people with defunding schools. Of the $268 billion I talked about, I actually was researching that 59% is going to higher education. And here's the saddest part. It also turns out that the statistics show that only 86% is missing of people that want to become teachers. What does that say for the future of our children, when people don't want to go into a teaching job? Obviously, we need to be able to bring some of that budget towards the, like I said, we're at the bottom of the barrel, we're number 15, and 268 billion doesn't seem like a lot. However, when we have to compete in the world stage with children of other countries that, when it comes to, as Charlie mentioned, English, math, science, those kids are just as smart as ours. And what I feel is that what they do different from us is that they actually care about how they're going to educate their children, where we're talking about getting billionaires more money, therefore, we should take the money away from the schools. That doesn't work for me.
All right, very well. And let's go to our, basically, our closing statements. I'm going to ask that each candidate tell the viewers why they should vote for you for the District Five School Board seat this fall. And we are going to start with Ms. Mendez. Well, let's see, hold on. I think you actually got the start on the opening remarks, so I'm going to flip back to Mr. Queen here for the closing remarks.
Okay. Well, I think that our family, you know, I use us as a microcosm of the situation. We have five kids. One works at a bank in New York, one works for a computer company in North Carolina, one is a medical technician at the hospital in Augusta. My son is in avionics, and my other daughter works for the state of North Carolina. All of them have gone through Page County, through elementary through high school. And I think just seeing how they have performed through their professional careers, it gives me, it shows me what success can be. So I think that's, you know, what I would want to bring to the table, is devoting my efforts to seeing that the kids succeed. One thing that happened quite a few years ago, when the grading scale was changed, where an F was 69, now it's 59, we have a large segment of the students that are coming out of the school with not very much marketable skills. And that's something that I definitely would work towards, is addressing those concerns of kids coming out with a D or even a C, because they're having to compete, like Anna said, they're going to have to compete on the world stage, so.
So Ms. Mendez, why should folks out there vote for you for the District Five School Board seat this fall?
Well, I, as somebody who is a product of the DOD school system, I don't see why all over the United States, we shouldn't have the same quality of education that they provide our service members and their children. So I'm all for public schools. Thank you, Charlie, for mentioning your children. I think that's important, because as I mentioned, I have a daughter that's getting a master's in accounting, and she's worked for one of the top four firms, KPMG. And my son, a great mechanic, at least when I have a car problem. But the problem that I see happening is the fact that, there was talk about bringing in 600,000 Chinese students, so they can come in through the H-1B into the United States. And I'm going to say, no. I mean, what about our children? Our children deserve those jobs. Our children deserve that opportunity to grow and become part of the, you know, when we compete through the world stage. And I think that definitely it's something that you need somebody up there to fight. And definitely, I'm a fighter. And the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and I've always believed that, so.
Well, I want to thank both of you for being here tonight. I thought you both did well, and I appreciate that you participated in the process. We want to tell everybody out there viewing that early voting begins on Friday, September the 19th. It is not that far away, 11 days from the day when we're filming. It'll be nine days when you see this first air on Wednesday, September 10th. October 14th is the deadline to register to vote. Make sure that you are registered early. October 24th is the deadline to request an absentee ballot. And of course, Tuesday, November 4th is Election Day. So no matter who you cast your ballot for this fall, remember to do your civic duty and get out there and vote. Like always, we want to tell you, if you liked this video, make sure you hit the like button, subscribe to our YouTube channel at Page Valley News, and share this video with a friend. And we'd like to thank Eleanor Arrington for all of her work behind the camera and in the editing room this week. And as we end every episode, even though we're talking politics tonight, we want to remind everybody to go down to the Page County Animal Shelter and help one of our furry friends find a forever home. Until next week. For Anna Marie Mendez, for Charlie Queen Jr., I'm Randy Harrington from the Stanley Fire Hall, telling you to make sure you get out there and cast your vote.